Good evening, everyone. If you could find a seat, we can get started with our swearing in ceremony.
I will sit in the public.
Sure. Could y'all please rise for the presentations of the colors by the Admiral Wilmer F. Halsey, Jr., ROTC. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the playing of our national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Henry, cull it! Ready, hut! Go, wire, march! Cull the guard, halt! Order! Cull it! Ready, hut! Cull the guard, and spin!
Please, a round of applause for our color guard. Could you please join me in welcoming Reverend Dr. Wanda Lundy of the Salome Hope First Presbyterian Church, who will now lead us in an invocation prayer.
Let us pray. With joy and gratitude, we gather for this Elizabeth Board of Education meeting. We offer thanks for this day, for this place, and for the shared purpose that unites us. We express our appreciation for the gift of learning and for the thousands of children represented in Elizabeth. We cherish every child's unique contributions to their educational experiences. We celebrate the creativity and diverse learning styles each child embodies. We value the variety of languages, cultures, and curiosities present, recognizing the potential for greatness in every child residing in Elizabeth. We acknowledge the efforts of the adults dedicated to nurturing each child. Truly, a mind is a terrible thing to waste. We are thankful for teachers who see the individuality in each student, honoring and fostering their unique gifts and talents. We offer thanks for the families supporting these children, guiding and encouraging both parents and guardians in this journey. We are grateful for everyone in this meeting. We recognize the unique perspectives and talents each person brings. We welcome the opportunity to unite for a common purpose. As we convene, as those elected are put back into this amazing position to serve, we are thankful for the unity among us. May we set aside personal differences, working in harmony towards our shared goal. With joy and gratitude, we look forward to wonder-filled opportunities of learning that lie ahead for all of us. In peace, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Could you remain standing for the Honorable Judge James Wilson? Judge Wilson, please come forward for the swearing in of Charlene Bathelis. Do you have a Bible? You can be seated.
This doesn't work? It sound like it works to me. You ready? Want to raise your hand? This is what, your 20th time now? Getting there. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Charlene Bathelis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're not in just yet. There's a second part to this. I state your name.
I, Charlene Bathelis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will possess the qualifications.
That I will possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a board of education.
Of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified.
And that I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to revised statute.
Pursuant to revised statute.
Nineteen colon four dash one.
Nineteen colon dash four.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Colon four.
Colon four.
Dash one.
Dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction.
Due to conviction.
Of a crime.
Of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
New Jersey statutes.
New Jersey statutes.
Eighteen A.
Eighteen A.
Colon twelve.
Colon twelve.
Dash one.
Dash one.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
That office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now you're in. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Wait here for a second. Ms. Bathelis, we also have your certificate of election.
Thank you.
Could you please welcome City Council President Carlos Sedeño, who will be swearing in Eliana Chevres.
We will start. I state your name.
I, Eliana Chevres.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
To undergo, to support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
The State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
To undergo, to be true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
To the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Part two. I state your name.
I, Eliana Chevres.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
Do I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
To the office of member.
Of board of education.
Of board of education.
And that I'm not disqualified.
And I don't disqualify.
As a voter pursuant to.
As a voter pursuant to.
RS nineteen.
Nineteen.
Um, colon, uh, four one.
Colon four one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
To conviction of a crime.
To conviction of the crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in NJ.
Listed in NJ.
S eighteen A.
S eighteen A.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And here is your certificate of election. Could y'all please rise again for the Honorable Judge Jabil L. Alfonso, who will be swearing in Stephanie Concaldes-Pastana.
Okay. Well, I was told that I can't give any speeches today. So I just want to say thank you for allowing me to be here, right? And next time, just tell me to wear purple so I match everybody else.
I'm so sorry, Judge.
Are you ready?
It's an honor to have you. Thank you.
I state your name.
I, Stephanie Concaldes-Pastana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and true allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Stephanie Concaldes-Pastana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I... Sorry.
You can read.
Thank you.
That I possess.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
Nineteen colon four dash one.
Nineteen dash... Four dash one.
It's a hard one.
Sorry.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed.
Or offense listed.
In NJS.
In NJS.
Eighteen A.
Eighteen A.
Colon twelve dash one.
Colon twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry. Before all of the elected officials leave, if we could just have all the elected officials just come to the front and take a picture with us, please, before you go to your council meeting? Thank you for your counsel, for being here. Thank you for your council, for being here. Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is the annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education, notice that this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger in Cable Vision of Elizabeth on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. In addition, this notice posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the Mitchell Building, five hundred North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the board. Participants for the public portion may sign in up to the start of the public speaking so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or a general education comment. I'll now take the roll. Barbosa.
Here.
Baffles.
Here.
Carvalho.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Here.
Incalvis-Pastana.
Here.
Naron.
Here.
Rivera. First order of business is the election of the president. So at this time, I will take nominations for president, and a second is not required.
Mr. Kennedy, I would like to nominate, stand Naron for president.
Mr. Naron, are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion and a second to close the nominations for president?
I move to close nominations with Stan Naron for president.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll take a roll call if this is to close the nominations. Barbosa.
Yes.
Baffles.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incalvis-Pastana.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes.
So we have only one nomination for president, Mr. Naron, so we can vote by just saying yes. Barbosa.
Yes.
Baffles.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Would you like to vote for president? Mr. Naron has been nominated. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incalvis-Pastana.
Yes.
Mr. Naron.
Yes.
Mr. Naron is our president.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Happy New Year. I want to first start off by thanking all of you for being here and giving God all the thanks and praise for this opportunity for two thousand twenty-five as we embark on what's going to be an amazing year. And many blessings to you and your family. So thank you for being here, all. And I also want to thank our past president, who just passed me the gavel. And she set such a, some big shoes to fill. And she had a wonderful year, so let's give her a big round of applause. I must say, I don't know about you, but I respect women leadership, and women are phenomenal at being leaders. So Charlene, you were an amazing president, an amazing leader, and, you know, you shined bright and you set a wonderful example for our young women in this district. So thank you for all that you've done. And thank you for making my job so hard. All right. Just want to say a few words before we get started. And, you know, you all wore the color purple, and I just want to thank you for that. And, you know, that's the theme of the year. Last year, we wore green, and it did wonders for us. But this year, we're doing something a little bit different. But as we gather here tonight, I just want to also acknowledge some of the elected officials that are here. I know there's a large list of elected officials. We have Mayor J. Christian Boers. Let's give him a big round of applause. We have Senator Joseph Cryin, Council President Carlos Sedano, Councilman-at-Large Manny Grove. You can clap for them. Councilwoman-at-Large Patricia Perkins-Augusti, Councilman Carlos Torres, Chairwoman of the Commissioners, Ms. Lourdes Leon, Commissioner Sergio Granados, Assemblywoman Annette Quijano. The Honorable James Wilson was here with us. He did the swearing in. Honorable Judge Hubelo Alfonso and Councilman Berg Linias of East Orange. Thank you for traveling so far and joining us. So let's give them all a big round of applause for being here this evening. And to all the staff and principals and educators and all the family and friends that are here today and our administration, I want to thank you for being here. As we gather here tonight, I just want to take a moment to reflect on the incredible opportunity that we have before us to share and shape the future of education in our community. This is not just a meeting, but it's a call to action. It's a time to dream big, a chance to commit ourselves to a bright future ahead. Despite all that you may believe is going to happen, we're here to hold it down and make sure that we succeed and win. I'm thinking about this moment, and I couldn't help but consider the color purple, as I just mentioned. A hue that symbolizes so much of what we are striving to achieve. Purple is a color of royalty, reminding us that the students are the crown jewels of the district. They are our legacy and our greatest investment, and the ones who we will carry forward everything we build today. Purple also represents creativity and wisdom, two pillars of a thriving school system. It challenges us to think outside the box, to innovate and prepare our students not just for the world as it is, but for the world as it could be. Another world is possible. It reminds us that every lesson taught and every program initiated must empower students to imagine new possibilities and solutions. Purple is a color of unity, blending the calm stability of blue with the passionate energy of red. In this room, we come from diverse backgrounds. I forgot to say bonsoir, buen estado, bonjour. You know, and, you know, we have so many languages that we share in this district. And I always say assalamualaikum to my Muslim community, you know. We are united with one mission, to create a district that uplifts, inspires, and nurtures every child. As we look to the future, let us clear, let us set clear goals. Let us prioritize equity, ensuring that every child, regardless of background, has access to resources that they need to thrive. Let us commit to academic excellence, equipping our students with the tools to succeed in a competitive and evolving world. Let us strengthen the bonds between schools and community, and community is going to be a major focus this year. We're going to make sure that we're out there and we're bringing the school and education to them, and they don't have to come to us. Because education is not just about the classroom, it is about the village that surrounds and supports it. Tonight, let us carry the spirit of purple in our hearts. Be bold, be creative, be wise, and be united. The future ahead of us is filled with challenges, yes, we know that. But also, it's filled with immense opportunity. I always say, where there's a challenge, there's great opportunity. Together, we can ensure that our district becomes a beacon of hope, innovation, and excellence for all. God bless you all, and let's have an amazing two thousand twenty-five. The second order of business is the election of our Board Vice President. May I have nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate
I would like to nominate Ms. Maria Carvalho for Vice President for two thousand twenty-five.
Ms. Maria Carvalho has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for Vice President? May I have a second to close the nominations?
I'd like to second the nomination. I'm not sure if we need a second.
The motion has been properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, can you please take a roll call to close the nominations?
Barbosa.
Yes.
Baffles.
Yes.
Carvalho. Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incalvis-Pastana.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes. Mr. Kennedy, at this time, I would like to congratulate our newly-elected Vice President, Ms. Maria Carvalho.
We'll vote first. Let's
I'm just following what you gave me.
Let's just, let's just vote. And since there's only one nomination, yes, for Ms. Carvalho on the vote would be good.
Okay.
Barbosa.
Yes. Yes.
Baffles.
Yes.
Carvalho. Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incalvis-Pastana. Naron.
Yes.
Now, Mrs. Carvalho is our Vice President.
Congratulations, Vice President. Madam Vice President, you have the floor to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here we go again. We did this once again. We did this a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah.
As I stand here today, I'm deeply grateful for the trust that has been placed in me by my fellow Board members, allowing me to, the honor to serve once again as Vice President of the Board of Education. As I begin my tenth year, I take a moment to reflect on how far we've come and the incredible work we've done together to reach this point. I am thankful for the opportunity to work alongside President Naron and all of the dedicated Board members as we embark on a new chapter in two thousand twenty-five. Together, we have achieved so much, and I know we will continue to work tirelessly to build upon our success. When I first began this journey in two thousand fifteen, my commitment was clear, to serve the children, the educators, and the families of this community with dedication and integrity. That commitment remains unwavering. We face new challenges, but our purpose remains the same, to ensure that every child has access to the best quality education possible, to support our educators, and to foster an environment where all of our students can thrive. As we move forward, I look forward to continuing our work together with renewed energy and passion. The future is bright, and I am honored to be a part of this remarkable team as we make a lasting impact on the lives of our students. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Baffles, who's been re-elected. Commissioner Baffles, do you have a few words you'd like to say?
Can you hear me now? Oh, y'all still can hear me now. Okay. Good evening, everyone, elected officials, esteemed guests, my colleagues, and the members of the Elizabeth community. As I begin my fifth term as a Board of Education Commissioner, I am filled with a great sense of gratitude and humility. Five has always been a special number to me, a symbol of balance and growth. And as I sit here reflecting on this journey, I see those very themes weaving into the fabric of my years of service. I began this journey in my mid-to-late twenties. I was eager to serve and unsure of the path ahead, yet deeply committed to making a difference. Now, as I approach a new decade in my life, I look back on the years with a heart full of gratitude for the lessons learned, the challenges overcome, and the countless opportunities to grow, not just as a leader, but as an individual. To the families in Elizabeth, thank you for trusting us with your most precious gifts, your children. Your partnership has become or has been invaluable, and your voices have strengthened my mission. It is, it is for you that I remain steadfast in advocating for equity, opportunity, and a brighter future for all. To my colleagues, leading aside you has been an honor, serving twice as Board President and always as a collaborator. I have learned that leadership is not about the titles. It's about service, humility, and a shared commitment to progress. Together, we have faced many trials, but celebrated a number of victories, and I am grateful for the journey that we all have shared together. On a personal note, I could not be here today without acknowledging the unwavering support of my family and friends. To my mom, my brothers Pete and Alan, and my beautiful, sassy niece, Nyla, your love and encouragement has carried me through so many difficult moments, and I am forever grateful for your presence in my life. I want to thank God for so many blessings, both old and new. My faith has been an anchor grounding me through every step of this journey, and even the difficult ones have been a blessing in disguise. Serving this community has been my calling, my passion, but my greatest teacher. And as I look to the future, I am filled with hope and excitement for what lies ahead. Together, we will continue to dream big, push boundaries, and build a legacy of opportunity and excellence for students and families in Elizabeth. Thank you again for allowing me the privilege to walk this path with you, to grow with you, and to serve you. It has been an honor. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Baffles. Commissioner Chavez, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, Mr. President. Good evening, and thank you, everyone, who has joined us this evening. We always hear that behind every great woman, there is a great man. Can be a partner, can be a father, a friend. But tonight, I want to say that behind every elected official, there is a great family and support system that's always helping us to giving our best for others. Thank you to my family and my entire support system for all your help and unconditional love in the things that everybody, everyone sees and in the things that not everyone knows. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Namari, Jamar, Tommy, and Jose. Love you. And I know too, you are the ones pushing me to do my best because in the end, it's not about us, it's about our community, the place that we live. And we want the best place for everyone. I want to thank all the elected officials who are here tonight or was here tonight, including our honorary mayor. Thank you for your support. And as well, our Council President who was here early. To the members of the Elizabeth Public School Administration led by our Superintendent, thank you because your, your work and dedication show us thank you, because your work and dedication show us your love for our students and represent each of us to our here sit-down today. Congratulations to our new president, Commissioner Stanley Neron, our new vice president, Commissioner Maria Carvallo. I'm so happy for both of you and look forward to continue working together for the benefit of our school district and our community in general. Thank you. To my fellow running mains, Commissioner Bathless and Commissioner Pastana, congratulations on the beginning of the new term. It's an honor to have the opportunity to share my journey with both of you. Thank you for many years of dedication and commitment to our community, especially for our students. To each of the member of this board, I'm here to continue working together for the benefit of our children and families, and I know that as a team, we will accomplish many great things during this year. In closing, I want to thank the resident of Elizabeth for providing me with this opportunity to serve this great community. I will continue advocating for our students, especially for the ones who need a voice, to provide equal opportunity to all our students and member of our community. Thank you. Gracias a todos.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pastana, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, it's working. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am honored to have this opportunity to serve on the board for another three years. I would just like to thank some of the people who made this possible. To my family, thank you for your endless support. I am so blessed to have you all and appreciate the encouragement and sacrifices you have made along the way to allow me to fulfill my passion of serving my community. To my board family, thank you for your support, your trust, and your friendship. Over the years, we have met many challenges, both big and small, to provide efficient and effective governance to the Elizabeth Public Schools. Our diligent work has helped ensure the necessary resources were available to provide Elizabeth's students with a high-quality education while allowing our district to hire and retain some of the most outstanding teachers, administrators, and support staff. I look forward to continuing this vital work that will directly contribute to the growth and prosperity of our community. To the people of Elizabeth, thank you once again for entrusting me with the opportunity to serve on this board. I am proud to be a part of this amazing team, and it is a blessing to give back to the community that has given so much to me. We must continue to work together to ensure the children of Elizabeth grow into caring and responsible adults who help advance our wonderful city. Thank you all once more, and Happy New Year. I hope 2025 will be healthy, happy, and rewarding for each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you, Commissioner Pastana and all our commissioners. Thank you, Reverend Lundy, for the opening prayer and being here this evening. And again, you know, we're just honored to be able to serve and have the opportunity to serve. You've believed in us, you've had faith in us, and we're here to continue fighting for you and standing for you. The next order of business is the resolution for the appointment of co-general counsel.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neron. Sorry, forgot. Forgot to put it on here. Pastana, Incavas Pastana, I'm sorry, and Neron.
Yes.
So the appointment of co-general counsel was the firm of Claude Cimmets, and also LaCorte Bundy, Vary, and Cincella. At this time, Mr. Cimmets.
Let's give them a big round of applause. Congratulations. Next order of business is the resolution for the introduction of the rules of governance.
I move to accept the resolution for the introduction of rules of governance.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incavas Pastana. Neron.
Yes. Thank you.
At this time, citizens may address the board. The microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participants may address or question board members individually. Each speaker shall comply in all respects with Board Policy 9322. Copies were provided right next to the sign-in sheet. The following rules apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals or naming of individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting. Comments will not be debated. Any person in violation of the policy will be warned, and their comments terminated if needed. If such violations continue, this individual may be escorted from the meeting. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. Mr. Candy, do we have?
It's right there.
Oh, it's right here? Okay. We first have Ms. Christina Mararama. If you can come up to the microphone. Good evening, Ms. Mararama.
Good evening.
It's on.
Good evening, and congratulations, Mr. Neron.
Thank you.
For your appointment. I heard several of you make a lot of promises to this community, as I've heard for the past seven or eight years, many of which have gone unfulfilled. So I'd like to start with highlighting several critical issues that impact the ability of our Elizabeth Public Schools to provide the free and appropriate education that every child is legally entitled to under IDEA. It's been rumored that the learning disability teacher consultants, the LDTCs, are being moved to classroom positions. If this happens, it will leave our IEP teams without a legally required member. According to New Jersey law, the LDTC is mandated to conduct educational evaluations as part of the IEP team. Without them, how will the district ensure that educational evaluations are completed properly and in a timely manner in compliance with the law? Currently, teachers with no background in applied behavioral analysis, ABA, are being placed in ABA classrooms, and many are reassigned without notice or proper training. The lack of preparation is detrimental to both the teachers and the students they serve. For students with the most intensive needs, it is critical that trained professionals are in place. A teacher with only a teacher of students with disability certification and a 30-minute check-in with a BCBA analysis is not sufficient. This does not meet the requirement for providing an appropriate education under the law. What is the district's plan to ensure that all ABA classrooms are staffed with trained and qualified professionals who can meet the individualized needs of our students? Many students receiving resource instruction are not receiving the required instructional minutes due to AB schedules. This schedule results in students being seen on alternate days rather than specific number of minutes listed in their IEPs. This, again, is another clear violation of IDEA. The district is rapidly expanding its autism program, but essential supports are not being put in place. Classrooms and trailers are being set up in buildings that lack critical resources like sensory rooms, indoor play spaces for recess, and private bathrooms for toilet training. These supports are not optional, they are necessary for the student's success with autism. What is the district's plan to audit and address these infrastructural needs? The district is outsourcing BCBAs from progressive therapies, but these BCBAs are stretched across multiple classrooms in multiple buildings. These structures make it nearly impossible for them to provide the level of support our students need. How can the district justify outsourcing such essential services without knowing that these BCBAs are unable to offer the consistent, dedicated support that students in self-contained classrooms require? These issues are not hypothetical, they are real, they are urgent, and they have lasting consequences to our students, our teachers, and our district as a whole. I'm here today, as I've been for the past eight years, calling for transparency, that you speak of all the time, accountability, and most importantly, action.
Thank you, Ms. Mararama. That is your time. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring forward, before I say that, I want to, some of the things that Ms. Mararama brought to the table, can we have our Special Education Management Committee look at them and work with our superintendent on that? All right. At this time, I would like to have Ms. Maria Lorenz. Good evening, Ms. Lorenz.
Happy New Year. With that said, and the newly-president and vice president being elected, I hope that this is the year where you find the ethics that you left behind and were charged with, charged and found guilty of being unethical, I hope that that changes in this new year with this new term, and that you've hopefully turned the page over. I am here because this board selectively likes to promote certain nonprofit organizations, and when asked to also post other resources, you choose not to. I'll give you examples of your discriminatory behavior. One has been the Elizabeth Parents and Students Care Page. That is not a page that you would promote, but you would promote another board member's page and a group that's here that's also a nonprofit. So is it only board members that get the privilege to announce their groups? Or are you being selective? Because also, the Tia Maria Foundation, which is having a gala on February 28th, is also giving out scholarships to children, and you've also chosen not to go ahead and promote them as well. Frank Questa's Organization of the Promise Awards, among his other many jobs that he holds in this city, are not the only foundations that should be giving out scholarships to children. There are a lot of other resources out there which you're not promoting to these high schoolers, which is giving money away. Okay? In addition to that, there's a great bowling league at Jersey Lanes run by John Fagotti, and that's also another great organization for young adults to high schoolers, to be able to go every Saturday and practice and bowl. And that is another organization which you choose not to promote. So I hope that you take note of these organizations, and that you actually do right by them instead of just favoring those that contribute to your political campaigns. I also hope that this new year, you do well by the special ed department. Again, I took this district to the state three times and won. I am here for any parent in any district that wants to file a complaint, I will help you, because it's time to hold this district, its administration, and its leaders accountable. Three times, I took you in one year to the state, and you were found guilty on every single charge. That is me, who is an educated parent. Imagine the other parents who don't know their rights, and how you continuously violate them, year after year, and do nothing, and think that you can get away with it. I hope that changes, because if not, you'll start seeking a lot more of me. Thanks.
Thank you. At this time, I close the public comment portion of this meeting. The next order of business is the appointment of standing committees and designation of representatives. At this time, I defer to the appointment to the standing committees and designation of representatives until the next board meeting. But I do want to appoint tonight representatives to the New Jersey School Boards Association. For several years, we have Ms. Rosa Marina Ortega I'd like to appoint, and Mr. Jerry D. Jacobs to the Union County Ed Services Commission. No, I don't believe I need a motion. I just need to appoint them. The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the official results of the school board election. May I have a motion in a second?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to accept the resolution of the official results of the school board election held on November 5, 2024.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incavas Pastana.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes, thank you.
The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the designation of the official media services. May I have a second and a motion in a second?
I make a motion to approve.
I second that nomination? No, I'm sorry.
That motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incavas Pastana.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes. As a lot of you may know, the Star Ledger will be coming, will no longer be printing, and it will be completely online. It will be NJ.com. So if you happen to look for that and you're looking for the Star Ledger, you will be looking online.
The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the designation of depositories for school funds. May I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion to approve.
I second the motion for approval.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments or concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. Mr. Candy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incavas Pastana.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the appointment of the insurance health benefits consultant. May I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion to appoint our insurance health benefits consultant. Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incavas Pastana.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the appointment of auditors. May I have a motion in a second?
Mr. President, I make a motion to appoint the auditors.
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call, please.
So this resolution appoints Suppley Clooney as the district's auditors, and Lurch Vincy Bliss, LLP, as our accounting consultant. Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incavas Pastana.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the appointment of chief medical inspector. May I have?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the appointment of the chief medical inspector.
I second the motion.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any comments or concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Once again, our chief medical inspector on this resolution is Dr. Munoz. Barbosa.
Yes.
Bathless.
Yes.
Carvallo.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Incavas Pastana.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the appointment of medical inspectors, not chief, but medical inspectors. May I have a second, a motion in a second?
I move to accept the appointment of medical inspectors.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. Roll call, please. Seeing none, hearing none, roll call please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Balthus.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes. The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the appointment of treasurer of school monies. May I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion to accept the appointment of the treasurer of school monies. Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Roll call please, Mr. Kennedy.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Balthus.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes. And the treasurer of school monies is Lucy May CPA and Associates.
Oh my.
The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for a schedule of board meetings. May I have a motion in a second?
I move to accept the schedule of the board meetings.
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments or concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, roll call please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Balthus.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes. The next order of business is the adoption of the resolution for the qualifying and appointing a public relations firm to represent the Elizabeth Board of Education. May I have a motion in a second?
I move to accept the qualifying and appointing of a public relations firm to represent the Elizabeth Board of Education.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any comments or concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call please, Ms. Kennedy.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Balthus.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes.
Naron.
Yes, thank you. That firm is Strategic Message Management Incorporated. And this brings us to a close. Do any of our commissioners have any comments, concerns, or any final words before we close out the meeting?
Mr. President, I just want to congratulate you as president and Maria Carvalho as vice president, wishing you guys much success this year.
Thank you so much, much appreciated. And before we close out, I definitely want to thank all the families that are here, all the families who stand with us every single day, especially my family, my parents, my wife, my son, who's not here with us days, doing his thing, and, you know, this is the sole purpose why I do what I do, you know? I fight for the families, and I fight for my family, and it's family first. And here, we believe in family as well, and we have a very special, special occasion. When we scheduled this meeting, somebody said, "I have a special day," and we want to wish our commissioner, Ms. Rosa Moreno, a very happy birthday. Let's give her a big round of applause. Woman of the hour, do you have any words you'd like to say?
Yes, first I want to say, thank Charlene, a great leader, experienced a lot, new change for our happiness, bringing different perception from our board for the first time. I really enjoy working with you. With Stan, new president, I know your passion for education, and you will be doing a great job. My running mate, Maria, I know you, you're working with the community science, you was 18 years old, this man. And for the, for Eliana, thank you, you're working hard with our community. And it doesn't matter what people say on this, you know, sometimes, but I witness, and I know you for years. Stephanie, it was nice to take a picture when I see you, first time, by yourself, now with your beautiful family, and your gift of God, your beautiful daughter and son. And now, the next person, you know, I love you from the heart of my heart, and I know you will be doing a great job. I want to congratulate three of you, you know, it's a lot of passion and dedication. And yes, it's my birthday, 53, 53 years old, it's, you know, you reached that floor, and I, thank you, I want to, you know, give you advice, enjoy life, we never know, we're here, tomorrow, we don't know. And to my board family, thank you, sometime we respectfully disagree, but you know, I love you, for our amazing community and leaders and director and everything, I wish the best year, we're here to support you, and thank you for the birthday wishes. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, and happy birthday. Let's give Ms. Rosa Moreno Ortega another big round of applause. And remember, it starts with the family. God bless you all, Happy New Year once again, and may I have a motion in a second?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I was trying to jump in there.
Oh, okay, there you go.
Just want to say very quickly, I want to congratulate, yes, congratulate you on your presidency and the vice presidency of Commissioner Carvalho. I think that it's going to be an exciting year, I'm looking forward to working with you and all the rest of my colleagues. I also want to give a quick shout-out, happy birthday shout-out to my running mate, and for your nice words, Ms. Rosa Moreno Ortega, looking good at 53. But once again, I want to congratulate you again, because I think it's going to be a great year, and I think we're going to get a lot of things done, especially when it comes to equity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioners? We're good? All right. May I have a motion and second to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.